How's Sharon doing?
She's well. She made me supper tonight for the first time, I think, in three years. I'm kidding. But yeah, it was a good. We had, uh, we had something, I think it was, it was some kind of tilapia thing about, no. What's another one real close? Well, that was good. Kind of sticks with you. I, I, it's, I feel, I feel very swimmingly tonight.
Something with wine sauce?
Uh, you know, I, mucho wine sauce. In fact, you're giving me an idea, Craig.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We'll get ready to start here. Let me know when you're ready, Holly.
I'm ready.
Holly says she's ready, so let's go. It is Tuesday, February 23rd of 2021. This is the city council meeting and we'll do the roll call.
Where's mine?
A Hardy here.
Karen Mello?
Here.
Doom?
Here.
Eileen?
Here.
Hirsch?
Here.
Hunt?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Magaki?
Here.
Mayaski?
Here.
Reeves? Alder Person Reeves?
She might still be logging in. She was on finance.
Okay. Um, Schumacher?
Here.
And Takovsky?
Here.
And I think I just saw Alder Person Reeves name pop up.
Here.
All right, we have twelve Alders present.
All right. Thank you, Holly. And next item is minutes and reports are in the packet, so it takes us right to public comment. There's nobody signed up to speak tonight, so we'll go right into communications and presentations. Do we have any communications from any of the Alders?
Jean does.
Uh, go ahead.
Mayor, I have, Mayor, I have two.
Oh.
Um, yeah, so, um, I just wanted to, um, let fellow Alders know as well as any, um, Stoughton residents who, who might be watching the meeting, that, uh, the first of our advanced directives made easy workshops is starting on March 1st at 5:30 PM. And it's all virtual. And like, this meeting's not gonna last more than thirty minutes. It's a chance to learn how to complete the details of Wisconsin Advanced Care Document called the Power of Attorney for Healthcare. So the first of those meetings is March 1st at 5:30 and hoping that, um, oh, we get more citizens and Stoughtons thinking about getting their documents done. So that was the first announcement.
Jean, do you have details of how people and where that meeting is or how they can connect?
Absolutely, and thank you. It is virtual. And the next step is, how do you sign up? Perhaps the easiest way is if you have a computer to go to Stoughton Health. This is a coalition of the City of Stoughton, Stoughton Health and the Stoughton Wellness Coalition. So at Stoughton Health, in fact, I did this right before the meeting and it's there. I went to their website on my phone, Stoughton Health, and under Wellness, there's classes and events. And this is free and of no charge. Also on the website is a phone number to call if you don't like registering on computers. But if you're already on the computer, maybe you can just go forward and register. So that is, uh, Stoughton Health is the best resource for that. And flyers are, are sort of out and about in this virtual world. Thank you for that, Regina. Um, and the second thing is just good news. Um, the Landmarks Commission was awarded a $17,000 grant. We are going to, uh, through the Wisconsin Historical Society, uh, there are some programs. And we are able to get the, uh, the downtown, um, historic buildings have design guidelines and they were done thirty years ago. And so we've received a grant which has no matching needs from the city, a free outright grant that will allow us to create new and updated and perhaps greener and more sustainable downtown design guidelines for our amazing buildings downtown. That was really good news. We just got that last night.
Excellent. Any other communications from council members? All right, I have a couple of quick ones on the agenda. It's the New Look Agenda. The council approved some changes in the order of the items. You'll notice that. And then we also added information on how the meeting can be live streamed or watched on, uh, through WSCO or Spectrum Channel 981. So we added that on the agenda. Hopefully it makes it more convenient for people. Since speaking of streaming, last night we had our first virtual concert at the Opera House and it seemed to go very well. I enjoyed it. There was people on YouTube chatting that. I actually figured out how to get it from my phone to my TV, so that was a win. And, uh, they did a, a great job. You can expect to see more streaming. I believe beginning in March, they're gonna do a series on Thursday night, so you'll probably hear more about that. So congratulations to the Opera House. And I wanted to thank Christina and Bob that performed. They did a great job and we appreciate them coming to Stoughton to do that. One last chance at communications. Anybody have anything?
If I could, I just wanted to, Wendy and I watched that as well last night and it was, it was very entertaining. It was nice to see, see, uh, Christina again and, uh, it was, it was, it was a lot of fun.
All right, excellent. Next item on the agenda is presentations. We have two of them tonight. And the first one will be an update from the RDA. And I'll just start it out by saying the RDA was developed in 2007 by Stoughton City Ordinance. There are seven members, five community members and two city council members, um, appointed, you know, by the mayor and confirmed by a city council. And as you can see, we have a, a wide variety of talent on the RDA, including Alder Person Doom and President Hirsch, as well as, uh, some people that have experience in financing and construction, which we find very helpful to the process. Jamin serves as the Executive Director. And of course Gary Becker does a lot of consulting for the RDA as well as the city. At this point, I'm gonna turn over the presentation to the Chair and that's Dale Reeves. And let me know when you're ready, Dale, and just tell me when to advance the slides.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. Uh, first of all, thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. We've got some exciting things going and so we wanted to, uh, move forward and, and let you know what some of those things are. And then, uh, at the very end, we'll have some questions. So, uh, we've got a good representation here. Working lately a lot with, uh, our attorney Matt and, and of course Regina and Ozzy. And I think Roger's online too, so we've got a good representation as well as the mayor and Jamin. So, uh, I'm guessing most questions that you'll have, if any, uh, should be able to answer that tonight. So, uh, the first slide here, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry about that. The first slide we'll look at is just some of the things that have, uh, been accomplished over the last, uh, couple of years. We've, uh, gone through the demolition of all the highway trailer buildings. The last one, uh, well, and along with the Public Works Garage, which basically has, has leveled the, uh, site. Besides the Public Works Building, one of the last one was, um, the Blacksmith Shop, which we, you know, adamantly tried to save on the left hand of your screen there. Just structurally wasn't possible and, uh, like I said, we did really pretty much everything that we possibly could to save that. We did, we did save the brick, so we're hoping that some of the future things that are done, whether that be, uh, part of a sidewalk or some kind of item may be able to utilize those bricks. So we've had the property appraised. Uh, we've received grants for the riverfront area, which we'll get into a little bit later. DNR has conducted, uh, a lot of Phase Two Soil Analysis, uh, we're still waiting on some of the results on a couple of those, especially in Phase One that we're doing right now, uh, or will be doing. That's with the soil samples and awaiting lab results. And then we'll show a little bit about developers agreement with Kurt Brink, who, uh, we started working with about a year and a half ago. After, uh, we put out the, um, the, the, um, contract to do the project. So you move the next slide. It's really the RFEI that we put out to all major developers. I will go through a lot of it, but that's, uh, this is kind of where we started. Uh, gosh, I'm, I, we're gonna be pushing two years now before too long. But if you look at the, uh, the, the bottom right-hand side of the evaluation process, probably some of the, the, the more important issues, the qualification experience of the developer, we wanted to make sure that we brought in somebody that had good insight, uh, and, and could handle a project of this magnitude. Uh, along with a vision, um, you know, we had had a community charrette. There was a lot of, uh, ideas and we wanted to make sure that somebody had that vision rather than putting something that's pretty cookie cutter. Uh, so we wanted to make sure that was handled. Financially feasible, uh, again, this is a, this, this has kind of been a difficult project. There's, uh, it's, it's kind of not that typical lot out in the country that, you know, flat farmland. This is a, uh, there's a lot of things that are going on in this site. It's brown field. Uh, there's a considerable drop, uh, from South Street down to the river. So stormwater management was a big issue. So we wanted to make sure that somebody had the ability to, uh, to continue to move forward. Again, the reputation, um, we wanted to make sure that they have done things like this in the past. That they've, you know, they've had a, uh, amount of experience that we felt that, again, could handle a project at this side. Uh, and then the historic response. So again, it kind of goes back to vision, but this is a downtown area. We have an opportunity to kind of do it, do it right. So we wanted to make sure that, uh, the, the historical integrity of this site was maintained because it's gonna be a, uh, you know, a focal point for, for the community. So we want to make sure, uh, that someone had that ability. On the next slide. Okay, so again, the proposals, vision, uh, phasing, uh, this is a big project, so we knew more than likely this is gonna go over a series of phasing. The branding of the project, uh, features of the building, how it was all gonna handle, uh, whether that was gonna be part commercial, housing, how is it gonna, housing apartments, condos, what, what exactly what it's gonna be. Concept drawing. We spent a lot of time, uh, probably over the past year, uh, looking at various, uh, different types of, of building structures, uh, that we felt were the right mix for the community. Uh, again, that's housing option, mostly in that area. The site and market feasibility was the density. Uh, we worked a lot and you'll see some of the, uh, see some of that as we move forward through this presentation. But, uh, uh, density was something that we were, uh, very, wanted to be very aware of and how that impacted along with parking. Commercial options, um, for the most part, I think, through the charrette and everything else, we felt this should be an enhancement to Main Street and not a competition for it. So, uh, we focused primarily on the housing issue and not so much from the commercial area. Uh, again, gateway visions, uh, street sidewalks, we wanted it welcoming to the entire community, even though we knew this was gonna be kind of for the people who lived in that area. Uh, we wanted to make sure that people were, uh, felt comfortable with sharing the sidewalks and walking through. And you'll see again, some of the, some of the, uh, other riverfront, uh, progress that's gonna be made and how that's gonna be, uh, vital to bringing people downtown. Infrastructure needs, again, lighting, stormwater management, uh, new bridge across the river. Green and sustainability, we wanted to make sure that the, uh, that the housing units and things that we're going to be looking forward, uh, toward, uh, whether that be energy type issues, charging of electrical vehicles, those kind of things that were probably something that's gonna be important in the future. And then, uh, last was the public community spaces. Um, again, we wanted to make this welcoming to the entire city, so. Next. So, uh, bottom line was, uh, we started working, uh, like I said, about a year and a half ago with Kurt Brink. Kurt is a developer in the Madison area, probably most known for some of the things that he's done along East Washington. Currently he has about four major projects going on down there. And all of them have been unique, uh, especially, probably one of the bigger projects was the Mott's Paint, uh, building that he reconstructed. So we knew from a historical standpoint that, uh, uh, he valued that type of, uh, architecture and restoration. So that was exciting, I think, for, for us. Uh, next. Some of the things that Kurt brought to us, again, uh, the, uh, design and con- concepts, uh, for the, uh, potential site. Again, we've spent a lot of time with, with Kurt in, in this area. The market research, uh, again, you know, what type of apartments we're gonna be, uh, we're gonna be something that people are gonna look at. This is a, um, this is a kind of a once in a, uh, chance type of, uh, project that we want to make sure we get it right. So he did a lot of research, uh, and any type like, uh, project like this takes a little bit of risk. But he felt, uh, he's actually kind of fallen in love. He's a real champion of Stoughton right now. He, uh, he, he really found the ease of getting here quickly from Madison was, uh, was a big benefit and something that people haven't realized yet. So, uh, uh, he certainly did his homework in that area. Invite the public input. So after we went through some of the initial stages, we did have a public forum that people were invited to. We had great turnout. People made comments. Kurt has always been real receptive, uh, to all of our comments that we've made. If we felt that, uh, it's something that we really wanted changed, he's, uh, he's been great to work with so far when it comes to, uh, really looking at what everybody thinks and the input from the city that, uh, people feel are necessary. In the city and projected phase, uh, process, we knew this is gonna be in several phases. This is a large project in excess of probably fifty million. So, uh, we knew that we wanted to work with one developer. You know, we, we would welcome if we had to go in a different direction, but we certainly felt that, uh, a developer was something that we wanted to handle the entire project. So next. Again, it goes back to, uh, some of our, uh, design principles and the way that we looked at something. We were very sensitive. Uh, as, as Roger said, the, the RDA consists of, uh, a great group that has a lot of skills and experience and, and knowledge in different areas, whether that be finance or environmental issues, historical issues. And so, uh, we wanted to make sure that all those things were put through, uh, when the design, uh, was kind of finalized. Again, tried to rebuild the Blacksmith, uh, shop that, uh, you'll see later on. If you haven't seen through the program already, uh, the kind of, at least the, the final design on the first phase that we're, we're looking at. Things that are probably important on the connections to the city grid, again, you know, is, uh, we wanted to, we wanted to make sure that this was a walkable site that, uh, ease of access, um, uh, sidewalks, uh, you know, the, obviously the riverfront is, is, is a big part of that, uh, the walkway. So, uh, that, that goes into, uh, the riverfront restoration, um, stormwater filtration. That, that took a considerable amount of time. Those, uh, uh, it took the Brink Group, uh, along with, uh, the city as a strand and, and the engineers that were coming in, uh, stormwater management, simply because of the, the, uh, drop from south to the river. We wanted to make sure that the water that was basically going back into the river at that point was as clean as it possibly could be. So, uh, I think by creating habitat and, and some of the ponds that you'll see later, was, uh, important to those, uh, those areas. Get access to the river and green space. We knew that, um, the density was going to be there, so the density, we wanted to make sure that, uh, they had total access to the downtown area. People were talking earlier about the, uh, the Opera House, uh, last night. Uh, that's a huge draw. So, uh, having the, the Opera House so close along with restaurants and other entertainment facilities is going to be, uh, an important draw for this development. And right now, again, we're, we're looking at mostly apartments at, at this point. But, um, that's kind of the first phase, uh, and then later phases, we'll go through the same process. Once construction starts on the first phase, we'll start, uh, basically start to look at Phase Two. And we'll go through the similar process of, of seeing exactly what the density, parking and green space and everything else is. Next, next, uh, slide. And again, some of this stuff, uh, you know, we've, we've already talked about, uh, again, uh, kind of shows an overview of historical pictures of the, of the, uh, of the project. But, uh, again, making it, uh, have a lot of access to Main Street and the rest of the city services. Next slide. Big part of the project, uh, although handled, uh, obviously through the city, but a part of this whole thing is, is the river restoration and so that, uh, uh, and you'll see some of the maps later on, but you'll see the projects going on. Uh, again, Kurt and his team, uh, has worked closely with Rodney. I, I think they meet, uh, every couple of weeks now and have met, uh, for some time of, of getting that Riverwalk put in because it's, it's an important thing as, as that first phase and especially the second phase is, is being built out. Communication and, and kind of making sure everybody's on the same page is important. So, uh, I think that, uh, riverfront area, uh, you know, by the end of next year is, is, or is, is actually by the end of this year is going to, uh, totally, uh, blow people away. I think it's gonna be beautiful down there. So, we're excited about that. Next phase. It's kind of what it looked like, uh, at the beginning. Uh, from an aerial standpoint, you can see on the kind of the lower left area of the, uh, red outline, you can see the, uh, the power plant. And then you can go along through the mill fab. And then, uh, upper right, uh, you saw the Blacksmith Shop and, and the left side on the corner of South and Fourth Street, was the old Public Works Building. So that's kind of the, that's kind of what we started with. And next slide. And that's kind of how it sits today. So, uh, that's pretty much the project sites. It's, like I said, it's taken time to, uh, to get to that point, um, of this project. But, uh, it's, it's pretty much there and, and so, uh, I think in the next slide, so if you want to go to the next slide, you kind of see how everything starts to develop. This is, uh, it's actually, I think, Rodney, this is, I think this is a strand slide, but, uh, this shows the bridge going across to Man Park. The, uh, the perceived, uh, what it's gonna look like for the riverfront. Um, and I think above, just slightly above, you'll see some of the, uh, some of the buildings start to take place of how, uh, it's gonna look, uh, in the phase, in the phase two and, and three and four. Excellent. I really wanted to throw this in, a couple of things. If you see the green circled areas, uh, those are basically, I think, Rodney may have another term for them, but we've always referred to them as retention ponds. Those are probably gonna be dry ponds for the better part of the, uh, the year. But there'll be times, especially in the spring, that you're gonna have a lot of rain and, and those are gonna fill. Those are gonna be filled with, um, natural, uh, habitat, flowers, things like that, uh, natural grasses and, uh, and so on. But it also tells you the, 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 how the, the, the actual riverfront path and the stormwater management and the phases all kind of come together and, and understanding the, uh, the elevation studies that need to be done. And it's, it's kind of really critical to get everybody in communication and, and, uh, and I think everybody, the city has, has worked great with Kurt and I, I, I think, uh, they've got a good relationship and I think he appreciates that and vice versa. Next slide. So this is kind of where we started. This is one of the first platted, uh, units. So you can see it's, uh, really cut up with, uh, different apartments, buildings, townhouses. And through this progress, you can see that, you know, in this, in the, in the labeling, you can see number of units and number of stalls. And, and this was, again, this is some of the things we had to work through, uh, that, you know, sometimes you don't think about is parking. And so when you think of the density level of all these people, you start to think about, you know, parking issues and how that's gonna resolve itself and how do you balance green space with parking space and density levels? So, um, this is part of the process, I think, that we've gone through and, and working. And again, uh, you know, I think that the RDA has a great group of people that, you know, that can visualize these type of things and ask questions, uh, which have gotten us to, uh, where we are today. So if you want to take to the next, uh, slide. So these are kind of, uh, this is probably one of the latest, uh, phase, uh, building models that you'll see. You saw from the original one, it's a slide before, um, and it's kind of hard. But if you want to see the, the space between buildings, um, well, you can see there's a road down the middle, north-south. Uh, I think that must be Sixth Street, uh, cause that'll go down straight where it was. But that's, that was a, that was a street at one time. If you see right now, um, we've changed that because we felt that there probably needed to be some more green space. And so, uh, that now is almost like a promenade kind of thing where, uh, trees, green space, sidewalks, that kind of thing. Will be, the people will be able to walk through South Street through that and then gain access to, uh, another path that goes straight to the riverfront, uh, walk area. So it should be extremely inviting to, uh, to a lot of people. And then the next slide. So this really looks at Phase One. Um, so you're talking up of the So this really looks at phase one. Um, so you're talking up at the upper, uh, left hand side. You're talking South Street, Fourth Street there. So you basically really have two buildings. Uh, A1 is one and then A2 and A3 will primarily be one building, but it'll look like two. Uh, and then off to your right, each of those buildings will have underground parking. Uh, so that's, uh, creates a lot of parking area for people. That's not visual or takes up space to, uh, the rest of the, uh, project. I think you'll see and yeah, so you're looking at, I think, a total of right now anyway of about eighty six units. Um, and parking for those units along with the surface parking. You get to a parking unit of about one point eight stalls per unit, uh, which is relatively high. I I think in standards of, uh, of projects like this. So, uh, that was an again, something that. Several of the members of RDA felt strongly about, uh, about making sure that. You know, there just wasn't street parking or or something else that, uh, that we could maximize, uh. Parking, uh, underneath the buildings. Next. So these are kind of, uh, in red, you can see where the the probability of of the phases will be. Phase one there, uh, Kurt wanted to make sure that when you're coming into this process, most likely you're coming down Fourth Street. He wanted to make sure that that really popped, uh, that that people could really see the, the potential of what was going to happen down there. Uh, so he felt strongly about that. Phase two then will will move down toward the river. Uh, and will feature a clubhouse for the for the association of everybody that that has, uh, that has an apartment there. So. They'll have access, uh, whether that be a pool, a gym, uh, community space, that kind of stuff. Uh, but then buildings, uh, seven and eight will probably be done along with the, uh, the outlet. So. Uh, that's still something we're working on as far as outlet one and outlot two, which is really where the, uh, uh, powerhouse is. And then you can see in the outlined in yellow, that's primarily the road that will come through. Uh, and I know Kurt was working with, uh, the police and fire to make sure that, uh, that they had access. Uh, and was had ease of getting trucks in and out, uh, if if something were to happen. So. Uh, that's being reviewed, I think, as we speak. Next. So this is buildings one, two, and three. So what Potter Lawson was doing, and that's Potter Lawson is the architects for Kurt Brink's group. Uh, you can see that they've been quartered in the first one. It's a three story building that looks very similar to the blacksmith. Uh, building that we could not say. So it's a matter of two floors with balconies and then the third floor. Again, has pretty much an open balcony, uh, for the year, the residents. All those buildings have underground parking and and balconies. The 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 middle unit, eh, well, the the middle part of, uh, the buildings two and three. Will probably house like elevators and things like that. So that's center party. It's it's again, it's basically one building, but it's designed to look like two. Um, we have talked to Kurt about possibilities of of solar panels on buildings two and three. Um, because of flat roofs and and have, you know, a lot of, uh, space. So, uh, we're we're kind of pushing that. I don't know how far we'll get. But it's certainly something that, uh, that we would love to see. Next one. And these are just a couple of, uh, slides. Uh, you can kind of bounce back between those two slides, but it just shows you more, a little bit more of the black. Smith's, uh, style building that, uh, was incorporated into the the design process. Um, street level, you'll see have, there'll be access to the, uh, to the apartments for street level. Again, Kurt thought that was important. To make it seem more of a neighborhood kind of feel. Um, and again, balconies, so. And 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 a lot of, a lot of, uh, windows which produce a lot of light, again, saving energy and. And just making the apartments, I think, pop when, uh, the inside is is actually finished. But I think there's a next one. Yeah. And and so these are, this is, this is the anticipated phasing in, uh, we anticipate sometime of mid to late. Summer as far as construction, uh, we've been meeting, uh, again, along with the city. Uh, and and Matt has been a great help, but we've been meeting with Kurt Brink's attorney and Kurt. On on many issues, but, uh, we've got a couple of things that we're finishing up before we've, uh, finished up the agreement to purchase. Uh, some of those are some environmental issue and who's handling them and and those kind of things, which we, we really don't see either one of them as a, as a, as a real game changer. Uh, but it's a matter of who's doing what and when. Uh, and and the other issue is is basically, uh. As Kurt develops, especially the first phase, you can imagine that, um, how the property looks now. And after you create this. This beautiful site on phase one, uh, it's going to, it's going to make other people look toward that development and and take interest. And he wants that little bit of security on moving forward. So this is kind of our attempt, at least a phase one or phase two, three and four about. How we move into, um, making sure that Kurt hits certain guidelines as far as, yeah, we're, we're good as far as. If you can start working with us on the next phase and the closing dates, so that we can continue to keep these phase two, three and four moving along. Um, uh, and making sure that there's no gaps as far as that's, uh, as far as that's concerned. So. Uh, you can kind of see some of the purchase price of the property as we go along. Uh, I think four hundred is listed as, uh, the purchase price on the on the first phase. And then the number of units that's coming along with it. So. Next slide. And Jamin, I'm probably going to have you jump in here. Uh, this is Jamin's chart. Uh, I'm sure he could better. Talk about it than than myself, but, uh, uh, Jamin, you want to jump in there?
Um, sure. So this is obviously, a lot of this is just some major assumptions at this point, but it's, it's pretty familiar to what you folks saw with. Bob DeVorex last presentation. So I kind of put it in a format, um, that you've recently seen. Uh, but again, just kind of working left to right, we have kind of the forecasting construction here. And you can see we're, we're starting with twenty one, hopefully. Um, valuation year and then the the third column over is the forecast revenue year. So if we start construction this year, everything goes well. The first year that the the tip is going to see revenue is is twenty twenty three and then we can continue working right. And and again, this is just the forecast or incremental value added. Don't, you know, don't hold anybody to this, but again. Based on the the phased information and kind of what we've seen from Kurt, this is potentially the the forecast incremental value added. Um, and then the the next column is just kind of the cumulative value added. So we're looking at approximately sixty eight million dollars in incremental value added just through four phases. Um, the mill rate is where it stands as of right now, this last twenty twenty tax season. And then the very far right column is the annual forecast and tax increment. Just based on the the four phases built out. Um, and again, it was just to kind of give you an idea of what this development could potentially mean. Uh, not only for the TIF, but for the city as a whole. Um, and if you look here, if we, if we carry this TIF to maturity, you're looking at almost thirty four million dollars in forecasted tax. Incremental revenue, um, which opens up the doors to do a lot of work in and around TIF eight outside of just the the phase four work. Now, again, this is, this, this doesn't include any potential project costs for the city, any types of of TIF incentives, public improvements, things like that. Uh, but it at least gives you an idea of how this could potentially cash flow. Obviously, this is best case scenario. Uh, we would, we would more than likely incur some costs throughout these phases in terms of public improvements and things like that. But I I think it paints a picture that if this does move forward and it gets phased out like this with this timing and that values there. Um, this could turn into a to a very successful TIF for the, the, for the city. Um, you know, we could do some work in Matt Park. In and around the TIF, some road improvements, infrastructure improvements and things like that. Um, so again, it it's, it's all assumptions at this point. And I don't think it's unreasonable at all. Um, but it's just to give you an idea of what this TIF could potentially do with this development.
All right. Thanks, Jamin. So that that kind of concluded that that portion of it. Uh, we've got a couple of little things that are moving along the side. One of those is, uh. Uh, the marathon site, uh, on, uh, on West Main Street. I think you're probably all familiar with, uh. It's just a, next to the the old home savings, uh, uh, along State Street or Main Street. Um, it was the old marathon station, I guess it is there. Uh, I think Regina thinks it's called the marathon site because it's taken forever, but. Um, I think it's actually an appropriate name probably for as long as it's, uh, taken to to get where it is. But, uh, we do have a purchase to agreement. Uh, we hope to close in the next thirty to sixty days. Um, uh, you can move on to the next slide. Uh, what's going there? Uh, it's, it's basically two different units, uh, that's going in there, uh, four units, yeah, each building. For a total of eight, uh, each of those will be a one bedroom, uh, apartment. Um, but, uh, the developer thinks, uh, that that is something that would really sell right now. Each of those units, I think you can probably go to the next one. It can kind of look so each of those units will have their own entrance. And, um. They anticipate right now, started construction in the spring, uh, right after closing. Go to the next one. And, uh, with that being said, the the last thing is is our revolving loan fund, which is, um. Uh, Lucas, uh, Tro has has done a great job of 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 kind of heading this area up. Uh, it was not, uh, a loan fund that was utilized a lot. Uh, we changed some of the ways that it was being handled. Application and and, uh, and how the loans were structured, uh, which, uh, really changed some things. So these are some of the people and things that have taken advantage of. That fun. Uh, and we've really had over the past, you know, year and a half or so. Uh, really seen since the change, really seen the success in in this building, uh, and has helped a lot of new and. Uh, uh, older, uh, businesses in the downtown. So, uh, we've, we've been excited about it and 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 very, uh. Very happy that it worked out the way that it has. And that's it. Uh, so we'll open it up for questions. And again, uh, I have a good group here, uh, representing the the RDA. So. I'm sure that most of the questions that, uh, that you might have, we should be able to answer. So I'll open it up.
Have, I have one. Um, I was interested, uh, and and I'm not sure how much this is defined yet, but if there are, um, some feedback loops. Um, built into this and maybe what at what points those might be in terms of, um. Uh, getting opinions on the desirability of some of the housing along the riverfront area. Um, and if if those, it might be periodic feedback in that, um, it might take place at various points in development. Or marketing studies, I guess it's, you know, I guess that's be the the thing it might fall under.
Sure. Um, well, I again, those, we've, we've had, like I said, we started with the charrette and.
Right.
And certainly had some public things. We will probably continue, um, you know, obviously COVID has kind of thrown us all for a loop as far as having. You know, public things, but, uh, we should be able to figure out a way going into phase two and some of the other. Uh, to update the community as a whole, you know, what's going on and get that kind of feedback. But, uh. Um, you know, certainly through their own, or whatever, they're, they're always welcome to, you know, join our meetings and and, uh. Uh, things like that. So we, we welcome communication again. Some of the, some of the better things that have come out of this thing has been based off of. Uh, some of the questions and answers that that's been thrown at Kurt Brink.
Yeah, I guess what I was sort of thinking was that, um, it might be good at various points to ask only one or two questions, like, would you live here? Or, um, you know, in and sort of a simple questions and as it grows, you know, or it develops, um, to see if that, uh. That whatever they they said first might change. So that's kind of what I'm interested in.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we'll certainly do that.
Any other questions or comments? They're being pretty easy on you tonight.
I think so. Does, does, does any of the other group, Regina or or Roger, uh, anybody want to say anything as far as the process or? Anything else that's gone along? Because, uh, again, this is, this is something that we've been, uh. Talking about now for a couple of years. So as as we get closer and closer, uh. Um, we're, we're getting pretty excited about having something moving on in the, the riverfront walk and possible, you know, construction of phase one along with the marathon site. So. Uh, Regina, Roger, jump in if you have it and, uh, ahead.
Uh, Dale, do you want me to summarize kind of the process that is is coming next?
Sure, that would be great. Yeah.
Okay, so, um, the redevelopment authority and Mr. Brink are working on an actual purchase agreement. Um, that will include, that will come to the city council as well, that will address. Uh, the terms under which the phase one land area would be sold to the developer and it will also speak to, um. The future phases in terms of how those are going to be managed and the right, the extent to which the developer would have the opportunity to develop those areas. So the purchase agreement is coming and that agreement also, uh, contemplates that there will need to be. Um, a development agreement in place between the city and the developer. And so the city council can expect to see both a purchase agreement. And a development agreement coming before you, you know, in the, in the coming weeks and and months. Um, you also will be, um, presented with the proposed zoning. For the project, both the site overall and the phase one area. That includes both a, uh, this is going to be zone plan development. So there will be a general development plan. That will govern the development of the entire site. And then there will be, uh, specific implementation plans for each phase that will. Go into, obviously, the details of how each, uh, phase will be developed. Um, and that will, to, uh, the question about public input. That will provide another avenue for formal, for a formal process with public hearings. Um, at least as part of the zoning process to, um. Give the public an opportunity to be heard on on the zoning itself. Um, so those are the. Things that are going to be coming your way in the coming, again, weeks and months, purchase agreement, development agreement, zoning, um. Approvals.
Thanks, Matt. Roger, anything?
Um, not much to add, Dave. You've done a great job at summarizing the RDA's involvement and how all the pieces have finally come together in a way that we all dreamed of. Three to four years ago. So this is one of those moments when we can all look back and. So this is one of those moments when we can all look back and say, wow, this really did happen. And so I'm really thankful and honored to be a part of the process that's brought us to this point. So the other thing I'll say, Dale, that you talked about, but I think it's worthwhile to say it again. One reason why, we all know that the COVID situation and the economy over the last year to year and a half has really been a kind of a real anchor for developers to move forward. Well, through it all, even though Kurt has kind of had to go his own path to make sure the pieces fit for him as a developer. I can tell you, and I'm sure Dale could say the same thing, and the mayor and others have been working with Kurt, that he's been incredibly excited about the ease of working with the city. He sits down and his team sits down with Rodney a lot to talk about stormwater. He's been very enthused about the ease of visiting with the mayor, with Dale, myself and others. So one of the reasons why Kurt has not gone out of the picture is not only his love for creative development, but his ease of working with Stoughton. And I can tell you with some uncertainty that when I was chair of the RDA, when, when he briefly talked about his other projects in Madison, he did lament that there were some obvious differences that made it easier for him to imagine sticking with Stoughton and doing this fine job down here that he's doing for us. So whether it be public utilities, working with Rodney, working with the RDA, the city, he is one happy developer. And the other thing he's always brought to us for the, for the council's benefit is the enthusiasm of knowing that he is onto something big here. And he's always felt that if he did phase one, as well as he could imagine, brought something creative, something enthusiastic and something different to Stoughton and to the region that the people will come. So from a marketing standpoint, I, I could say to at least for myself that Kurt has always been very enthusiastic about this marketing of the site being one of the easier things he's going to have to do because of the city's investment along the waterfront, the upgrading of the walkway, the upgrading of Forest Street and how that's eventually going to fit in. So he's one happy developer, and I think that's good for all of us.
Excellent input. Thanks, Roger. Yes, absolutely. And Kurt's been, it's been great to work with Kurt. Again, you know, I think he has a vision that was shared by us and, and he's always been very open to make changes as the, the RDA felt was necessary. So anything Regina, before we close away?
No, you did a great job. I just wanted to kind of piggyback on what Joyce had asked. And, you know, Kurt did a great job of a public meeting, I think it was like a year ago, and really developed a lot of excitement in what he had proposed to the, the local community. I don't know, Joyce, if you were there, but a lot of young people were there. They were really excited about the buildings he had proposed. So with follow-up with that, because I don't think the community knows where we are, I do agree that maybe we need to put together another public forum between, you know, the buyer's purchase agreement and the developer's agreement, just to give everybody an update. I mean, a lot of the community haven't seen the Riverwalk and the new development that he's talking about. I think it'd just be a great way to keep the community engaged. And perhaps during each phase, we can, the beginning of each phase, have another community forum and talk about it.
I, I to speak very plainly about it, the, the, you know, it wouldn't be going overboard. But basically, the more often you can ask people their opinion, the more likely they are to be in favor of the project. That's one aspect of it. They just like to be included, I guess.
Well, and that's been kind of their approach for this whole thing, with the beginning with the charrettes. And we've had Kurt talk and we've, you know, had a number of kind of small groups. So it's, thank you, Joyce, for, we're just like kind of pushing forward and kind of, you know, trying to get things done. We forget about our bigger vision of making sure that the community is involved.
So I do that too. That happens to me too.
If I can make a comment?
Go ahead, Aldo Justin.
This, obviously, this has been a long drawn out process. And, and I want to thank the RDA for their, doing their due diligence. I am extremely impressed with the building designs. I love the fact that they're, they've tried to recreate the blacksmith shop. I think it's, I think it's just a marvelous job that they've done. And I applaud them, I applaud the developer, and I'm really excited about moving forward with this.
Thanks. Yeah, it's, it, it's taken a while to get there, but we kind of started with the kind of industrial look. And then it kind of swayed away for a few months and then it kind of came back. But again, it's a testament to the people on the RDA that when they saw things kind of moving away from what they originally had thought, that, that he was kind of corralled back in there. And, and Joyce, that's a, it's a, it's a great idea and we'll do that. I know during COVID, this whole thing has been kind of a tough thing. We, we, you know, we had a public kind of, public airing of the airs report and trying to get that put together, you know, was, was a struggle to get informed of that kind of thing. So, yeah, we'll do our best and hopefully as things start to open up a little bit, maybe it'll be a little easier as we go forward.
Sure, I'm a big fan of online surveys too.
Absolutely, that's a good idea. Well, if that's, if that's it, thank you for having us. And again, if you have any questions, don't hesitate. Certainly you have Regina and Ozzy and, and if there's anything else that I can help with, please let the mayor know and I'm sure we'll, we'll get it taken care of. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thanks.
All right. Next presentation will be by myself and just give me a second here to set it up and we'll get right into it. All right, so last year, you might remember, I did a kind of a population summary for 2020 and I updated a few slides. Some of them might look a little familiar. I'll go through it kind of fast. But really, the reason I put this together is just so you guys have something to reference. You know, as we're making decisions and kind of just understanding where we were and where we're at and where we might go as far as population here in Stoughton. You know, when we make our decisions, every ten years, we have to do a comprehensive plan. The last one was done in 2017. This is kind of a, what the map looks like. I know it's kind of hard to read, but if you ever have any questions about the comprehensive plan, feel free to ask. The document is available, it's a long read, but there's definitely, you know, some things in there that guide us through the process. In our comprehensive plan, there were some questions asked out in the community. And one came back regarding growth. Now, we look at growth in a couple of different ways. In the comprehensive plan and most of the information I'm presenting tonight, growth means population growth. We also have growth that we'll talk about that refers more to construction and net new construction specifically. And this was the result of the survey in 2017. And you can see that in a ten-year period, most of the participants said they wanted 10% growth. So we're looking at 1% population growth per year on average. In the county, this slide here, I updated from last year and just put in some Stoughton specific information in the purple. And you can see from 1970 to 2000, the county grew at 1.29%. Stoughton exceeded that at 3.44% a year. From 2000 to 2030, we're projected in the county to grow at 1.03%. And right now, Stoughton's at 0.31%. So since 2000, we've been a little bit behind on growth. And you can see from 1970 to 2020, for that basically fifty-year time period, we grew at 2.31% a year. And this is the one that really kind of caught my attention. From 1978 to the year 2000, Stoughton population grew at 47.83%. So really, what that means is we, we're kind of moving along fairly steady and you'll see it on some of these other slides. And then we had a big spike and then it's kind of been flat ever since then. So this is our population going all the way back to 1850, when Stoughton was founded, there were 70 people here. And then I, first few years go by maybe 20 years and then I went at ten-year intervals until I got to the year 2010. And then I went per year. But you can kind of just see the, the population growth percentage here and where it spiked out and from basically 1970 to 2000. And then where we've been going since then. And you can see that since 2010, our growth, which is on the right, has really kind of slowed down. And for the ten years, we only grew at 3.5%. So divide that by 10, that's only 0.35% a year. There was actually years where we lost population and yes, well, how can that happen when we're building homes? Well, the simple answer is, is that families aren't as large as they used to be. Is, you know, the, the younger generation just are not having as many kids. And I'll show that on a couple of slides as we go forward here. This one here kind of shows our housing start history. And I just went back to 2010, so you can kind of have an idea of where we're kind of at as housing starts here. And, you know, you see some peaks and valleys on the multi-unit. And I've tried to identify where they were here, so you'd have something to reflect back on, on some of the different projects that have gone on here in the last four years specifically. And the numbers get kind of skewed a little bit because these housing reports I'm getting from the planning department, and these reports are generated when permits are pulled. And on the net new construction is generated based on when properties are assessed. So sometimes there might be a lag, so the numbers might not sync up quite the way you think they would. But at least it gives you an overall understanding of, of what's going on in, in the city of Stoughton. This one here basically just summarizes, you know, based on our comp plan, what we would need to do per year. And it'd be basically 131 people per year. The average household in Stoughton is 2.51 people. It used to be more than that. It'll be interesting to see if that number holds up or if it continues to drop. And that comes out to about 52 single-family homes per year to reach the goal that we set in our comp plan. And then I just listed some of the current projects. Some of them have been approved, some of them like Riverfront, 51 West, and some of these other ones are still in the process. But at least it gives you kind of an idea of what we might potentially have in the pipeline. This one here is based on school-aged children. So I have a spreadsheet I'll show you shortly that I take into that consideration of how many children come out of a single-family home versus a multi-unit. And this information came from the Builders Association. And this is a continuation of that for the multifamily. And really depending on the number of units makes a difference as well. You can see a multifamily, one-bedroom unit only produces barely a half a kid. I don't like how you come up with half a kid. But if you have three or more, it's, it's, it's higher than that. Actually, it's 0.06, not even a tenth of a kid. But if you get up to a three-bedroom or more, now you're getting, you know, more, more larger families, you know, because you have to have a place to have kids. And what happens a lot in development is the developers focus mostly on efficiencies or a one- and two-bedroom, which is advantageous for them. But for school-aged children, I'm sure the school district would rather see, you know, three bedrooms or single-family homes that just produce more families. This is the spreadsheet I talked about. And this kind of is something that I can play with once in a while. But basically, it just kind of shows what we have projected now for startups here in the next, basically from now to 2030. Like I said, some of them are still going through the approval process. So by no means are all these numbers a done deal. And, you know, this can change. But basically, this is going on, the projections that came out of different comp plans that were put forth and approved by the council. So Nordic Ridge, for example, I think last year, I think I showed they might have had 11 startups. And we were looking at maybe 14, so we don't always hit the numbers. Once in a while, we'll have a few things that'll just pop up that we weren't aware of, some infill projects. And I'll show you where some of those were. But if you see, you can take the number of units and I can plug in the formulas for the students and for the population based on the type of unit. And at the end of the day, if everything I have on the chart here were to come to fruition by 2030, in the last, in this decade, we would have a 2.08% growth, which is about double what our goal was. But as you might remember that previous to this, we've been far below our goal. So it gets us a little bit caught up depending on how you look at it. But it just, it's just something we can use as a tool if, if you decide that you want to understand, you know, what a future development, development might do as far as our population. This one here kind of shows some of the infill projects that are potentially available. I would say that each one kind of tells their own story. Some of them might need to have some public improvements done. Some of them may be as simple as somebody has a house and they have a lot next door, or they purchased a lot next door, so nobody would build next to them. So they're not really available, but they show up on here. The ones on the right are projects that we're either planning on doing this year. One of them is the Hats Group has been working on a project on Pine Street. Another one is the Habitat Project. And then the RDA project is on there as well. And then some of the other ones were some either out at Nordic Ridge or some infill projects that permits were pulled on last year. This one here just kind of shows some of the other ones that are suitable, but they're not zoned yet. You know, we do have some large acreage for sale right now, including the Ely property out on Highway B. And then Arnett has some property out on B as well. Mattson has some property out on, I think, 51 East. And then, you know, Dvorak's property out past, past the property on 51 West there on the west side of Highway 51. And of course, the Linderu property, which we actually, you know, have out there approved in the comp plan, but it hasn't been zoned yet and that property is for sale as well. And then just some other properties that are just mixed in here for whatever reason, they've never been developed. And what I try to do is if an opportunity comes around where somebody's looking to develop, I try to identify properties on these infills to try to get as many of them completed as we can. But some of them have limitations. You know, one of the other things that, this is a slide I just added since I sent, we set out the packet. One of the reasons we talk about growth and net new construction is, is if you go back, this is state revenue that was being shared in the state of Wisconsin. And this chart kind of shows back in the early 2000s. You know, the state really helped the cities provide resources for police, fire, public works and the rest of our city services. Then it was a dropout in 2004 and it stayed pretty much flat till 2011. And then 2011 is when, you know, really the, the laws change in the state of Wisconsin on the state, state aid is what I would call it. And you can see there is a big drop in 2012 and it's been flat ever since. And, and that was done by the state to keep, you know, property taxes level and then encourage cities to try to create revenue through the net new construction, which is the next slide. And this gives you kind of an idea of what our net new construction growth is. And this is basically all the construction that we do and what that adds up when the properties are assessed. And then at budget time, the state gives us our number. And then we can see whether or not, how much we can increase our budget. And then we can see whether or not, how much we can increase our budget. And you can see that if you look down toward the bottom of it, you know, we're typically usually near or above the state average, but below the county. The county typically grows more than Stoughton does. And then the items in the red kind of just show that, you know, that's how much additional money we would have had if if the state wouldn't have changed the law in twenty eleven, you know. And that's the money, real money we could have had to either increase services or staffing uh within the city of Stoughton. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the school district. You've seen some of these charts before. Uh, this one only went through two thousand and eighteen. I should be getting an update on it, but you can see where the enrollment has declined over the years. So obviously, the school district's formula is based on three components. And one of the major ones is a three year uh school average student count of they usually call it, you know, the September count is when they do it. And they use a three year average. You can see where Stoughton has been dropping since two thousand and four. And that's basically because, you know, families just aren't having as many kids. And here's another graph that kind of illustrates it as well. And then for the school district, that also this kind of shows, you know, the the loss in state aid that they receive based on the declining enrollment. And then this one here just uh shows kind of a list of some of the commercial lots that are available right now. And I just threw that in just so you would have something to look at. So these slides are in your packet. Um, they're available. If you want to talk about them further, I'd be more than happy to do that. But at this point, I would open it up for any questions.
Tim, on on your first slide, you talk about that twenty eight percent um wanted ten percent or more. Well, that's not the majority. Actually, the majority, the sixty seven percent, want growth to be ten percent or less. So for us to have less than ten percent growth is actually what, you know, ten or less is actually what the majority of of Stoughtonites that did the survey want. So if we don't hit that ten percent mark, I think that is fine because if you look at it, that, you know, the real majority is probably somewhere between five and ten percent. And so, you know, to base policy only on twenty percent of the people answering the question as opposed to the majority, you know, I mean, it's just a survey, but we should only take it at, you know, as that truly the majority wanted ten percent or less, not ten percent or more.
I certainly appreciate the comment and I think that that argument could be made. Um, and I think what it illustrates to me is we really need to do a better job of when we go through the next comprehensive plan and even before that, of communicating to the public um what that growth actually means when it relates to providing city services. Because we know that the cost of providing city services goes up every year. And with this spending caps that were put into place in two thousand and eleven, we really have a few options in order to continue to provide the city services. One is to increase our revenue through net new construction. Another one would be to eliminate some services and maintain others. And the third one would be to go to referendum um in order to be able to provide the services, which would obviously raise people's taxes. So, you know, to me, that's part of the story that doesn't get told when you go through a comprehensive plan update. And certainly uh respecting the people that filled out the surveys and, you know, suggested they didn't really uh, you know, they wanted to have below ten percent growth. But I think that, you know, decisions that we make do have consequences as it relates to the city services that we all want to provide and really even some of the things that we want to do moving forward. Um, the other thing we we have to do more of is is utilize the TIF money and that's not always popular as well. Uh, but that's another way at least we can accomplish some of the uh public improvements that we want to do versus uh borrowing money through the CIP and those types of things. So I think those are all really important conversations that we need to have. And that's really the purpose of of me putting together, you know, these, what I expect to do on an annual basis. And I I think that if the council would wish, we could certainly have, you know, maybe more specific discussions on this moving forward. We don't necessarily have to wait ten years to do a comprehensive plan update. That's what we're required to do by law. But if we decided we wanted to do some sort of a survey, um which I proposed, you know, when I was running for mayor. Um, and unfortunately, you know, didn't get passed during the budget process. We could certainly revisit that if we wanted to get information um like this or any other information as we're going through and making decisions.
I agree, but I also think that um just to grow so you can get more city services, also you're not looking at that the the amount of city services also grows. And so the true amount that you actually garner at the cost of growing to a point to maintain this is not necessarily why a lot of people moved to Stoughton. People had a choice and moved to Stoughton or moved to Sun Prairie. They chose Stoughton because of their small town, the more um less crime, the the schools. You know, they didn't want unleashed growth, the majority of people, if you talk to them. And to assume that they don't understand that question, I think, is very um actually demeaning of our citizenship. And so I would uh suggest that in the future, we, you know, if we do a survey, we honor that people are intelligent and they do know how to answer survey questions. And um, that's all I'm gonna say right now. But, you know, I think growing just to fill schools and to get more money is not, I think we gotta look at the whole picture of what that actually means for our whole city. A lot of people really want smart growth and not just unleashed growth.
Well, I certainly agree with that. I think that's what we're trying to do here. And part of, you know, having smart growth for me is really to try to have more collaboration amongst staff. You heard a little bit of it tonight with the RDA presentation on how, you know, Planning Director Sheal um and Finance Director Friedel are are hands on in that process as well as the city attorney, the members of the RDA. Dale mentioned that we brought in, you know, uh emergency management as we're laying out these developments to make sure that we're creating situations that are safe and efficient to be able to provide the services in the most cost effective way as we can. And I think that, you know, I would use uh Fifty One West as another example where we've we've tried to do that. Um, when we basically redesigned, you know, the layout of that project as well as connecting it to our current parks and trail systems. And I would say when we redid the the planning for Kettle Park West Phase Two, we did the same thing. We tried to take all the information we had and we tried to put together a development that was really um efficient for us to maintain, whether it was fire and EMS or if it was public works, plow in the road. You know, we want to make sure that we don't create any unnecessary work for our staff and still be able to continue to to maintain our small town feel. But we also have to understand that the way the the financing and the spending caps have been set up, you you really have to have at least a minimal amount of growth in order to sustain what you have. And I'm pleased to say that a lot of the initiatives in the governor's budget is to try to give municipalities back the local control that they lost beginning in two thousand and eleven. Now, I don't know how much of that's going to be successful during the the budget process at the state level, but at least a recognition, at least by some, that some of the decisions that were made in the past by taking local control away from us has made it more challenging, has forced us to make decisions that maybe some people in the community um might not appreciate. So um certainly, I think these kind of conversations are are gonna continue for the next several years, especially coming out of the economy. You know, one of the best ways to come out of a a recession and do COVID is to create, you know, some local jobs and some local energy. And a way to do that is is through growth, but it has to be managed. I agree with you. It can't just be, you know, let's approve everything that comes across our table. It needs to be done in a deliberate and diligent and a, you know, appropriate manner. And that's what we're trying to do. And certainly, any information that the council needs uh from us, we're more than happy to provide and we we do appreciate the input we get. And I think you'll see a lot of what we've done is a reflection of the direction that we've received from council and community members as well. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I do. Um, I have one um observation. And that is uh sometimes, just to hear you both uh give your insights into this. Sometimes I also think that when we think about growth and if there's a concern about growth, what we what's really motivating us is that we want to preserve our neighborhoods. And I think if the growth, um I've seen some developments now already where where the development actually formed a a community for people. So I think if the growth occurs with some um some of that, then it might, it might help, I guess. Um, so I think maybe that's part of it, is is the preservation of the the neighborhood feel. And even if the the cities by population got bigger, people would still feel that they had a home for themselves and their families and their their activities.
Yeah, I think you really hit on something there. I think that's what the RDA is trying to do with the Riverfront, is to create a community down there, but also create an area where the community as a whole can appreciate as well. And I think that's, you know, what we're trying to do in the other developments. And the other thing I'll add is, you know, there's a huge push right now in Dane County especially to get some more workforce housing. And that's gonna be a topic that, you know, we're gonna have to talk about um because there is a huge need for it. And we have jobs here in Stoughton. And when we start talking about equity, you know, to me, it starts with housing. People need to have a stable place to live. And if we can't help provide that, that is not really gonna help, you know, people live in an equitable world. So um I think those conversations are gonna start occurring. We've already had some. Um, the Habitat Project is a good example of that. They're gonna do four duplexes this year. Uh, you know, that was something that I initiated two years ago. I'm I'm pleased to see that's moving forward. Um, we're gonna have that conversation uh potentially out at Kettle Park West and at fifty, you know, Fifty One West as well. And probably in in any future discussions that we have, that's gonna be part of the conversation because there's a lot of incentives out there right now. Um, you know, through the state, through the county, to provide uh homes for people that otherwise not would not be able to afford them. And that's what brought me to Stoughton, so that's near and dear to me. So, you know, my thing is is, you know, how do we provide those whole housing opportunities for families and and do it in a way where the community uh will embrace that? And, you know, I think those are conversations that we're gonna have as well.
I think this has been a good discussion and kind of we, we're all thinking that we we have to be clear eyed about kind of how these incentives for growth are kind of uh perverse incentives in some ways that um really our hi- hyper capitalist system is trying to make us grow infinitely uh our economy in a uh a finite system. And I I voiced my environmental concern about growth before. Um, I think that's that's another thing to do. And um really, all of these points are things we need to think about going forward.
Thank you. Fred, did you have something too?
Oh, I was just thinking that um I I agree that controlled growth really is the objective, but that some element of growth has to take place because either the uh city as a organism is growing or it is actually going to be contracting. And you need to have some growth to support what we really want to do in the city. That'd be my thought.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, I'll see if I can find the agenda and get back to it here. All right, here we go. Um, next item would be uh consent agenda. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second. Motion and a second. Would anybody like anything acted on separately tonight? Here and none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. All right, item number six is uh Resolution R twenty two of twenty twenty one. This one comes from the Plan Commission, Alder Person Carvello.
Yes, uh, thank you. This is R twenty two of twenty twenty one approving a certified survey map to combine the three parcels at four oh four West Wilson Street and seven hundred Bickley Court owned by James and Michelle Gerber, Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Thanks for a second. Oh, go ahead. Think I heard a second.
Yeah, I second it.
Okay, thank you. Um, anything you want to add, Alder Person Carvello?
Um, this is really uh to allow for the future home addition at the four oh four West Wilson Street address.
All right, any questions or comments from Alders?
So it looks like on this one that they're combining three lots. What is their home addition? Is it the garage on the lot that's far away? I I wasn't really clear on what the addition would be.
So the addition is not shown on the plan, but right now there's a lot line that bisects, you know, is their backyard. And they would need to have a thirty foot setback from that that current lot line between lot twenty lot uh thirty eighteen and nineteen. So with that lot line going away, they'll still have to honor the easement there, but it'll allow them to reduce that, that they won't have that thirty foot setback requirement any longer.
Very odd shaped lot, so it's it's huge. Good for them. That's that's good.
Yeah, and this is an example of some of the, some of the addresses that I had on the one slide that, yeah, they could put a house on there, but in this particular one, you can see why they didn't. Any other questions or comments? Here and none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next one is R twenty three of twenty twenty one. This one also comes from the Plan Commission, Alder Person Carvello.
Yes, thank you. Uh, this is R twenty three of twenty twenty one, resolution by the Common Council of the City of Stoughton, conditionally approving the preliminary plat of conditionally approving the preliminary plat of Outlot One, Block One, uh, Kettle Park West, the Meadows Edition, and I so move.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All the person Carvelo?
Uh, I'm just gonna go ahead and hand this one over to Rodney if he doesn't mind.
Certainly. Uh, so this is on the northeast corner of Telemark Drive and Oak Opening Drive. It was planted originally as an outlot. Um, as you recall, during that process, there was discussion about, um, additional residential layout to be forthcoming at some point. They've now put together a lot layout that's being um, submitted as part of this plumery plat. There's a number of conditions that would have to be satisfied before the final plat can move forward, but the resolution outlines those expectations before submitting the final plat. So it's recommended to create these additional lots as part of the plumery plat process.
All right. Does anybody have any other questions or comments? I can pull the map up here quick just so you could see what Rodney was talking about here. Maybe. Thought I had it. There it is. Any questions or comments on this one?
I, I have a question.
Uh, go ahead. All the person Hunt and then President Hirsch.
I'm just wondering, how many total lots do we have pictured there? Is it just around the little cul-de-sac? Or does it include the other side of Telemark Trail also?
Did you catch that Rodney? You're muted, I think.
I apologize for being muted. Yes, it's, it's the six lots surrounding the cul-de-sac that are being created as part of this plumery plat.
Okay. Thank you.
And Rodney, I know, I heard that there was a concern about the, um, the cul-de-sac that it was, might be too narrow for emergency vehicles. Has that been worked out?
I, I don't think that's the issue on, on this one. I think there was a different, um, eyebrow, um, scenario on the other part of the plat that was being looked at. Uh, so I don't think that's the concern raised for this cul-de-sac dimension.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, this is one or two cul-de-sacs in this development. We tried to minimize it, as I mentioned earlier, to make it easier for emergency management as well as public works. So, you know, we, we, we limited it down to two anyway. Um, I think the original proposal, I don't remember how many were in there, but certainly, uh, you know, there's quite a few of these if you get over, um, off of Milwaukee Street and, you know, it creates extra work, especially with all the snowfall we've had this winter. So, uh, but I think this one's designed in a way where they can get in and out of there fairly cleanly. Any other questions or comments?
I, I have a, a question or comment.
Uh, go ahead. All the person Carvelo?
Um, and I, I'm not recalling exactly from planning regarding this. Was there, I guess, what, what, I, I think farther, what is it, over at Castle Circle in Kettle Park West, there's something that is, is on their plan that is more of a horseshoe shape. Um, so I guess it's not a definitely a cul-de-sac, but would something, and that I think was put in to sort of ease uh, concerns for plows and emergency vehicles and that sort of stuff. Was that considered?
Actually, this, this actually presents a better access pattern for emergency access than the other restricted configuration.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Here and none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right, the next two are set up for, uh, first readings tonight. The first one is coming from the Plan Commission. All the person Carvelo?
And this is wherever, and yet, it ordinance five of 2021. Uh, an ordinance amending the zoning classification of certain lands located within the preliminary plat named subdivision of Outlot One, Block One, Kettle Park West, the Meadows Edition in the City of Stoughton from RH uh, Rural Holding to SR Five, which is single-family residential, and this is a first reading.
All right. Anything you want to add to that one, Director Sheil?
Just the spirit of this is to rezone the lots that would just be created as part of the plumery plat you just acted on to create those as single-family parcels.
Are there any questions or comments?
I just have a question now that you're going through all these, um, the plaques for the Meadows. You know, we're seeing like, we're seeing like snippets of them and not seeing like the whole picture of how they all fit together. I guess next time I would love to see what their vision is. I mean, we had it originally when we approved it, but I'd like to see how they all fit together at some point instead of just these little pieces.
It's a valid question. Um, cer- certainly this is one of, uh, the only outlot that remains unplanted. So this was kind of an anomaly, if you will. The other area where the lots were already created in the, the majority of the entire plat, but certainly we could give you an overview along with this to better identify where it is.
Thank you.
I don't know if this helps here or not.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? This one will be back in two weeks. Um, item number nine is a first reading from the, uh, Utilities Committee. It's ordinance six of 2021. Um, that would be, all the person Johnson?
Uh, yes, yes, gotta pull it up here. Hang on. Okay, that would be. Okay, this is ordinance six of 2021, an ordinance to create section 74 dash two, parent H, parent I, City of Stoughton Code of Ordinances relating to the replacement of indirect service lateral connections. And this is a first reading, uh, of the Safety Committee voted on a seven zero uh, to recommend approval on February 15th. And I see Jill is with us, so if there's any questions, I would direct them to her. Um, just briefly, this is, this, uh, is similar to what we were doing with the Prospect Avenue. Uh, when they were doing the reconstruction last year. Uh, because the laterals there went down the hill toward the river and they changed it so it would go to the street. So this is, uh, this is similar. I think Jill, if, if you could expand on that for me, please.
Absolutely. Thank you. Um, basically we have a situation where, um, we have properties that are served by a single lateral. And what I mean by that is there's a single connection of that private lateral into our sanitary sewer system. That has actually resulted in disconnection of service, um, sewer backups from one property into another. And we don't have any mechanism to help assist property owners to be able to address these. This type of construction is obviously no longer allowed for new construction. Every property has its own single uh, private lateral to serve it. But even in some cases, we're finding that people don't even know that there is laterals connected to multiple other properties. This provides, provides us a mechanism to be able to address those going forward. It's one of the pieces in ordinance is we actually had brought this before council. Um, we did something very similar because we have the same kind of configuration on the water side where we have water services that provide service to multiple different parcels. Uh, that was approved mid-last year or so. We actually pulled this off the, uh, you know, for discussion at that point in time because we do recognize a difference between commercial industrial developments and residential. Um, it's a health and safety aspect particularly for those residential properties. Under certain provisions of the ordinance, we would allow those kind of connections to occur in industrial or um, maybe a commercial situation where if the sewer were to back up, it's not helping safety. They can send people home. They can address it, but for residential properties, um, it's a mechanism for us to be able to address that and help those property owners to be able to, you know, get a new lateral, get a connection to our sanitary sewer for them, their property specifically.
Thank you, Jill. Are there any questions or comments? So this one is on as a first reading, which means it'll be back at the next meeting. If something comes up between now and then, you can just let Jill know and she'll be glad to answer your questions.
Actually, if, before we move on, I do have one quick thing regarding this, if you don't mind.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I, do you know how many, do we know how many examples of situations like this there are in the city?
Oh, um, I would say that we probably have, um, without actually looking up, I think this question actually came up before. I think there's maybe 20 or 30 properties that would be in this configuration. There's one in particular that I think there's five homes connected to a single lateral. And in the past, we actually had a situation where one property owner dug through it, um, didn't realize what it was later, about a year later or so, the sewer backed up into another property. Um, so, you know, there's not a lot of these out there. Um, and we're actually even finding as we do can, um, treat improvement projects, additional ones like this.
Is there also, if, if, if a property owner or a homeowner was to receive a notice that said they, this situation affects them, is there anything available? Um, like, I don't, I don't know how much it would cost to resolve the problem. Is there any sort of assistance that might be available to somebody if they suddenly get this notice in the mail and are caught off guard?
There isn't any funding mechanism for it. Um, and we don't really intend to proactively pursue these connections. It's really to provide a mechanism to be able to address them in one of two ways. One, if we have a good road construction project moving forward, even though that sanitary sewer lateral is actually private, we stub new laterals to the right of way for connection. So that gives us the mechanism then to also provide that up to that point and making connect from there. And then to also address these situations where there's interrupted service, um, sewers being backed up into another property. And so it's a mechanism to be able to address those and help support those property owners kind of navigate through this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, that's all we had on for the agenda for tonight.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here and none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Right up there.
All right, we're dismissed. Thank you.
Night.
Night.